I'm told we don't have any minutes to review, so we can move on to old business, with which there isn't any. New business, we have two items, growth policy plan and Wheatland TED. And I'm also told that there's a request to reverse the order. Makes no difference to me. Does anybody else have any feelings one way or the other?
I don't.
Okay. And I guess we're up on the TED.
Absolutely. First of all, before we begin, we have a new member of the board, Ross Johnson, and an alternate member, Chad. Is it Cosell?
Yes, Cosell.
Okay, perfect. Do you think it might be appropriate for everyone to introduce themselves?
Well, we went around while you were upstairs.
Oh, you did? Okay.
I don't think we got to meet.
Okay. Perfect. Okay. So, yes, with that being said, there was a request to change up the order of the agenda. Janet Cornish and Lynette Windemaker are here with Community Development Services today to talk to us about the Wheatland TED. So, in your packet, you have a couple of items. Two transmittal memos and four pages of an advisory recommendation. I also have copies of the proposed map here. I lack my own copies. I think all of you have seen this. So, with that being said, I think I would turn it over to Janet and Lynette.
Thank you, Nicole. And give to the members of the planning board, again, as Nicole mentioned, I'm Janet Cornish, and this is Lynette Windemaker, and we've been retained by the Montana Business Assistance Commission to assist Broadwater County in the creation of a targeted economic development district at what we call the Wheatland area of Broadwater County. And the process of creating one of these districts involves a number of steps. The first step, which the county commissioners already have taken, is to identify the area as being infrastructure deficient. In other words, doesn't have an adequate public infrastructure to support what the law calls for in these types of districts, and that's secondary value-adding industries, manufacturing, other types of industries that add value to a product or technology. Montana law states that there's a role for the planning board in this process, and that is to make a recommendation to the county commissioners with regard to whether the targeted economic development district is zoned correctly and also is zoned in accordance with the growth policy, and also that the plan for the area is in accordance with the growth policy. But Broadwater County didn't have any zoning in this area, so the first step in the process was to, is to, create a zone for that area that is a zoning area that would then be able to support this targeted economic development district. The role of the planning board, then, and the reason we're having, meeting with you today, is twofold. We're asking to make, we're asking you to review information that we're going to be presenting and to make recommendations. The first recommendation has, is with respect to the proposed zoning regulation for the area. And as Lynette will mention in a few minutes, it has, the recommendation would have two parts. One is terms of the boundary, whether you believe it's appropriate, and secondly, whether the zoning district is in keeping with the growth policy. The second set of recommendations would be specifically with reference to the targeted economic development district, or TED, and that would be, again, first of all, is it zoned accordance with the growth policy, or will it be zoned in accordance with the growth policy in this case? And secondly, whether the plan for the area is in conformance with the growth policy. So, these two recommendations, which, that's all they are, the recommendations, then would be considered by the county commissioners as we move forward through this process. But the plan, the Montana statute calls for a really close alliance between land use planning and the importance of land use planning and the need to address this, these infrastructure deficiencies in our communities. And so, I think it's really a strong point of the statute that it's tied so closely to land use planning. With that, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them, otherwise I'll go ahead and turn it over. Yes.
I don't understand how you could have a zoning area when zoning doesn't exist.
We would be actually, we are going to be, the first part of this is to actually present a zoning regulation that would be adopted ultimately by the county commissioners. So, we don't, you don't have countywide zoning, but this would be creating a zoning district under the provisions of the Montana zoning law with respect to growth policy, planning, and zoning. And I think Lynette can add to that, because I'll turn this over to her.
So, as Janet presented to you, this is the first step before you, and that is to look at the proposed zoning district and the zoning, the district, so the boundary of it. Is that the appropriate size of the district? From this point on, it can get smaller, it can't get any bigger. So, is that an appropriate place to have an industrial-commercial zoning district? And then, the second question is, is the zoning regulations themselves in accordance with the growth policy? And so, you have two, basically, two parts to this recommendation today, and I would tell you that your growth policy doesn't touch very strongly on land use, but it does call that area out as being an industrial-commercial area. And so, that's what you have before you is some proposed boundary line for about 1,000 acres on the north side of the interstate, and then, an industrial-commercial zoning district. That's pretty straightforward.
And if, I was just saying, the recommendation goes to the commission, and then there's a?
Yeah, the, once you make a recommendation, this goes before the county commissioners, and their first step will be a resolution of intention to establish the district and adopt the regulations, and then, there'll be a 30-day protest period before it gets adopted. So, if you have any questions about what's before you in terms of the zoning, certainly try to answer.
What's the significance of 1,000 acres? How did you get these?
Basically, Brian and Eric, and I think some of the county commissioners possibly, and landowners, had discussion as to what they thought was appropriate. Clearly, as an industrial-commercial area, we're not looking at including residential in it, and we had some discussion about whether to go south of the interstate, and we decided that that was not an appropriate move, that we were going to keep this all on the north side of the interstate, and that's what we ended up with. At this point in time, like I said, it can get smaller after this point, but it can't get bigger.
Why would it not be appropriate to go to the south?
It's mostly can you supply utilities? If you're providing utilities, and that is the intent, the major intent of this is wastewater, and, you know, it may not be as simple to provide it to the south side of the interstate. I don't think they were interested so much down there either.
And the cost of going under the freeway and MBT permits, everything starts to expand pretty dramatically very quickly.
So, any other questions? We are asking for a recommendation from you.
You have not, I don't remember in these documents, but in the other ones, we were sent with 35 pages. You referenced 76, too.
Yes.
Has 76, 2005, have all the items in that been met?
They have been met. Are we missing something that you've noticed?
Well, I'm unaware of a public hearing for...
The county commissioners will hold a public hearing.
Okay, but it says that has to happen beforehand.
You're not adopting anything. You're making an advisory recommendation.
I'm aware of that.
And this was published as in, this right here was published as a public hearing.
Okay, that's first knowledge that I personally have. Your paper advertisement and everything here says it's a regular meeting.
There's, the notice said, "public hearing."
In the legal section of the paper for two weeks.
So, that doesn't make it a, that a special or a regular meeting doesn't change whether it's a public hearing. That's just what the notice says. So, this is a regular meeting, or a special meeting, I guess, Nicole. All of yours are special. Any other questions I can answer for you?
So, Nicole, I don't know if you want to take up each item separately and address the first recommendation before I go to the second, or do you want me to continue and talk about the second recommendation? What would you prefer?
I think it would be appropriate to make a recommendation on each topic separately.
Yes, okay. So, you need to open it to the public and take, oh, any, public comment first.
So, if that makes sense to the board in your packet here, and if you need to take a minute, I know you're just getting these documents today, these, this memorandum, and then, the recommendations, so if you need to take a minute to read over them, if you feel that's appropriate. But there are two separate topics that you will be making motions of a recommendation.
How the rest of the board feels, they're tied together. I personally think that any vote or action should take place. Obviously, we have to address each one of them separately, but I think that it would be better, in my opinion, because one precedes the other. You can't have the TED without the zoning, so let's hear what happens with the TED. Is my position that? Or it's free to speak on anything else.
Michelle, if I have a presentation, Mr. Chairman, the TED.
Which do you prefer?
Look up to the board, really.
I have to admit, I read every single drop of this paperwork, and I'm as confused as it could be. And if you all would present it, we can absorb it as you present it and maybe have a clearer definition of what I was reading.
Okay, all right. Be happy to do that. Is that okay with you?
Yeah, I think we're all in the same boat, Jim, as far as I'm concerned. It's as clear as mine. I've read the MCA multiple times, and I think I know what it says.
No, I'm happy to do that. It's your pleasure.
Yes.
Okay. So, again, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning board, so if I get, if I'm covering ground that you're already familiar with, stop me, but I'm going to start at the beginning, and that will be, I hope it will be helpful. So, the Montana urban renewal law allows communities to create special economic development districts. Two kinds. One, an urban renewal district, which can only occur in municipalities and cities, and that's to address life in urban centers and commercial areas. And the second is to create targeted economic development districts, or Teds. So, we have urban renewal districts and Teds. Teds can be created both in cities and in counties, but Broadwater County can make use of the TED as a tool. And when the Montana legislature wrote this provision of the law, it was trying to solve a problem. What problem was that? That was that there were a lot of areas in Montana that did not have adequate infrastructure to support either the expansion, the retention, or the recruitment of new value-adding businesses. And value-adding businesses are defined as when you add value through some kind of process, whether it's manufacturing, or a chemical process, or adding scientific knowledge. But actually, you know, if you're taking, I always say you're making furniture out of wood, or beer out of hops, whatever we're doing, we are adding value to Montana products. And as we know, what's happened over the last half-century is that so much of Montana's resource-based industries, value-adding industries, have been diminished. So, the council, excuse me, the state legislature is acting in response to that, to try to create incentives for communities, to help communities recruit, retain, and expand value-adding businesses. Does anybody have any questions about those definitions? So, what the state law says is that communities, or counties can create, and cities can create these targeted economic development districts, and if they choose within those districts, they can use a tool called tax increment financing. And tax increment financing allows you to take any of the new property taxes that come from the new development in that district and reinvest it in infrastructure. But tax increment financing doesn't have to be part of this, but it typically, in all cases in Montana, counties and cities have decided to use that provision as a means of financing infrastructure. So, you have this, what I think is a win-win. Property owners still have to pay taxes, but they know that if their monies, that they're investing in the community, are going to support the businesses through infrastructure. In the case of the Wheatland TED, we're looking at infrastructure, as Lynette mentioned, that's largely for water, for wastewater treatment, sewer handling, and we know that with Wheat, Montana's recent expansion, they're needing more sewer capacity, and the proposed Bridge of Brewing Company also needs additional, or needs a better sewer capacity. So, the property taxes that would be derived from new development would help offset the costs of that public infrastructure. So, that's what the kind of district we're creating, a targeted economic development district. What the Montana statute also says is that the area, this activity, as I said earlier, that we, when we create one of these districts, it has to be done in a manner that is, reflects the vision that the people have for the county, and in this case, that's articulated in the growth policy. And I know Jerry's going to be talking to you a little later about, you know, a new growth policy, but we're still operating under the existing growth policy, which does, as Lynette said, does support commercial and industrial activity in this part of the county. But the law says we have to zone the area. It has to be zoned. So, the first, so coming back to your original question, the language here is that whereby, all of, if I can have this, oh, I have it, I have it, excuse me. Whereas, you were created as an, as a, as the Broadwater Planning Board, and that you adopted a growth policy, and you've decided, the county has decided it wants to create this TED, that, and that because it must be zoned, therefore, you are recommending to, or, you know, if you pass this, you're recommending to the county commission that this is, that indeed zoning in this area does follow what the growth policy said, in other words, commercial and industrial, and that the boundary that's being recommended is appropriate. That's essentially what this first resolution says. It asks, it asks you to weigh in on those two things. One, is the zoning appropriate, given what you've said in the growth policy? And two, is the boundary appropriate? Does that help a little bit?
Yes, and I can see where, we can say the boundary looks good to us, but how does it look to the people in south of the county?
And there'll be an opportunity, you know, we've, we've had several meetings where people have had an opportunity to weigh in, and as this is a public hearing, people can weigh in again today if they're here. And as Lynette said, and there'll be, after this goes to the county commission, that will initiate a 30-day period of protests, where people can come in and say, you know, I don't want this part, or they, there'll be plenty of opportunities. Your decision today is one only a recommendation. It is not, in itself, doesn't, doesn't actually create in any sense. So, but as you said, the opportunity is important for people to weigh in, the people that actually live there.
Yeah, I don't want to make rules for them.
Right, right.
Since I'm not down there.
Right, and so, there's people, I think, here today that can speak one way or another, and then, again, the county commissioners will be able to do that. From your standpoint, however, that, is that it's more of a technical role? You're not necessarily saying, you know, yes, you should do this. What you're saying essentially is determining whether this is appropriate with respect to the growth policy, and then, you may want to weigh in a bit with respect to the boundary, but again, it's more of a technical process step that gives the planning board a chance to review it with respect to those, general land use planning concerns. Is that?
With respect to the growth policy.
With respect to the growth policy.
Does it follow your growth policy?
Thank you.
Yes. I thought you were going to present the TED.
Oh, and then the TED, too. Want me to go ahead with the TED as well? Yes. So, the, the second set of recommendations, so the first one has to do with zoning. The second is the plan, which Nicole forwarded to you. This is the plan for the area. And what it calls, essentially, it identifies the needs with respect to emergency services, sewer services, the broadband, I think we've touched on, there's a variety of identified infrastructure deficiencies, roads, access, also very important, that are currently deficient with respect to supporting secondary value-adding industries. So, what the plan states is that it gives Broadwater County commissioners the opportunity to address those issues within that area, so, and using tax increment financing and perhaps other sources. The plan further identifies the, you know, the fact that there are certain types of industries that are likely to locate there. They're not limiting those, but it looks, you know, certainly brewing and all the things that go with that, and the bakery, and other businesses that might support those activities. But that doesn't preclude other types of businesses from coming in. So, what you're being asked today is something is, again, does creating a district in the Wheatland area, a targeted economic development district, reflect the view, the growth policy for the area? So, you're making a recommendation, again, to the county commissioners as to whether that district's creation will, in fact, help implement the growth policy. And secondly, is it, will it be zoned? In other words, the zoning, kind of is one step ahead of this. If the zone, if it does get zoned, is that zoning then in conformance or in accordance with the growth policy? So, essentially, what, you know, Lynette said, a moment to go. What your real, your role in this process is to make a recommendation regarding whether this effort, which includes both a zoning step and a TED creation step, are these activities support the intent of the growth policy, which was to promote commercial and value-adding industrial development in the Wheatland area? Does that help?
Perfect. Okay, all right. Thank you.
Any comment from the public? Particularly for our new members, but I'll lay out a little bit of history, kind of like what you had just went through. We were approached in May of last year by MCA in regards to the TED. We told them at the time that we did not have any particular problem with the TED. We needed to know some more information. Once we got into it, the zoning was a key part of that. We had another meeting, and they came back on the 27th of June, and essentially, we told them the same thing, that zoning was the first thing that needed to happen. We didn't feel like the rest of the taxpayers of Broadwater County had any benefit in them zoning it. If they wanted to do it, we needed to have people that had skin in the game. It needed to come from the people within the district, or the future district. Nicole brought forward the fact that consultant would aid in starting that district, that it's always, to my understanding and the feeling of this board, that zoning needed to start from the ground up, not from the top down. And that's not what I'm seeing, and I don't really want to go into specifics of it here. I'll entertain questions, but I feel like we've got the cart before the horse with these resolutions and everything else, that it was something that was trying to come in and literally either bamboozled us. I don't like being backed into a corner, and that's the way this whole thing was presented. I think we need a lot more time to make any reasonable decision for the county. We are advisory in nature. The commissioners can do whatever they please, whether we say yes or no. But I personally see no reason for us to go along with what we have in front of us today, because these are written as resolutions. They make MCA references in there, which I don't particularly want to go into today, because I'd rather get on to the growth policy so we can accomplish something. But we're just not ready to sign these documents, because there's too much there, and in my reading of MCA, if we were to sign these, we would be doing something that was, at best, inappropriate, if not illegal. We need time to convince ourselves that that's not the case. Anybody else have any thing to add to that?
The only thing I can add to it is, I feel like I've been through this before, south of the county, rolling Glen Rents, example. What would you all have for tax base up here right now, had you had an 18-hole golf course there, and we screwed that up royally? So, we could maybe let that be an example. I feel if we had the things presented to us like we did, so that I can understand it better, because the zoning part, I definitely didn't understand at all. According to the growth policy, I found the old maps, it's exactly where we want the growth, down there. I just don't, what should we do?
Well, my belief, and I'm not trying to say that it's what has to be done, but there's too much in these documents for us to say yea or nay. You got to take the steps. And we haven't taken the steps. You walked in with a ham truck, and you dumped a whole bunch on our table and said, "We want you to approve this." Well, personally, my answer is no, because you have not taken the steps that need to be taken, in my opinion. I don't hold myself out to be a legal baker, but I'm not bashful about expressing my opinion either. We told Brian when he came in, "We don't have any problem with the concept." The big sticker was the fact that the zoning needed to start down there, and it needed to go up. And once that happened, then we could probably be on board. The one thing that this made me do was go read some MCA, and there's a The one thing that this made me do was go read some MCA, and there's a great deal of questions in MCA in that urban renewal law, and you even referenced in the colored brochure, I don't remember what the number was, 4231 or something of that nature, but it, it talks about the planning board's role in terms of what needs to happen. And in that document, in MCA, it says, "We have 60 days to make a recommendation after the plan is presented." And the plan can't take place until you've got zoning, so why aren't you down there working on the zoning?
The plan is...
As opposed to trying to cram something down our throat and get us to go along with it based on the desires of the commission? The commission can do what they want to do, they do not need our input. They want it, so, I'm not even going to go there. But the only thing that I can see coming out of this thing, I prepared a letter that I will pass around, we may need a motion, we'll ask for a motion, we need more time. It's not a definite no, but if you want me to sign that, it ain't going to happen today. Because there are some serious things that need to be brought out. Tim?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Tim Ravendall here, and I just want to just emphasize a real important factor, as a citizen of Broadwater County, something that I've witnessed for many years, and that is a disconnect in communication between our advisory boards and our executive branch here in the, in the local government. I'm not here to beat up on anybody, but I'm here just to point out that you raise a real good point. There's too much information that is cycled through a funnel, if you will, to certain individuals, but the people that are on the table representing the citizens, which is you folks right here, as an advisory board, often get left out of that equation. And so, it's, it's my position, as always has been, and Jenny's known me for a long time as well, that is very important in order to gain the public trust in what our local government is doing. And so, I just wanted to add that without getting on to any pedestal here, because I certainly think we need to make sure we keep that door open. Thank you.
To try to get something positive to come out of the meeting, um, I have verbally talked to the other members, not the new members, because I didn't meet them until today, and I didn't know for sure who, who was named. All I saw in the paper was that there'd been one name and an alternate, that's all I knew. But I prepared a very short, one or two-sentence statement that says, "We need more time." Because as a board, we are required to make a recommendation, but that recommendation needs to be based on fact and some research, and in my opinion, we're not being allowed the time to do that. Had the previous meeting not been canceled, and I didn't even receive our email copies of this until the day after the canceled meeting, that was my computer problem, not anybody else's. But no, there's not enough time. So to keep things legal, what, how does the board feel? Did we make a motion to pass it around, and all the members are free to choose whether they agree or not agree?
I have a question.
Okay.
Is part of our research. Is there anybody from down Southwood County give us some pros or cons, so we have something to go by as part of our research on how you all feel about it? Yes, ma'am?
I'm Mickey, I'm very, I live down in the county. We have a business, actually, several businesses. The only people that have actually approached us to talk to us has been, lost the name, sorry.
Brian.
Brian. That's the only people that's actually come to us to pose anything. You mentioned zoning. I am admittedly slightly concerned about what zoning will do to me and my property. I, I currently run several businesses, but I also live there, and that is a concern. Is that going to be something that tells me that I can't do something with my property? And that is a concern to me.
Excellent.
So Herb, are you suggesting that we should first take a look at the zoning side of it first, and then...
Well, we need to look at it, Ross, but I don't think, in my mind, I'm certainly not going to sign this document, because there's too many MCA references in there that I don't fully understand and/or have heartburn with. But the reason for my draft of a short item is so that we can provide something to the commissioners, so that we have met 76 to 204 that says, "Yes, we're going to make a recommendation." Our recommendation is, it's premature, and under the one that's referenced in here, the 71542 something, 31, I think it is, we have 60 days by MCA before we make a reference. That's all I'm saying. If they want my answer today, my answer's no. I'm just saying that we need to give them something, in my opinion, that says politely, "Folks, you've got the cart before the horse, we need to take the many steps, we need to make sure that we're complying with the law." I do not personally consider these to be complying with the law.
An answer to your question according to MCA, 762204, on number 5B, the general character of the proposed zoning regulations, that proposed zoning regulations are on file for public inspection at the office of the token recorder, so when we get this all squared away, you should be able to go up there and see that. They've been up there since May.
I, I, you know, Brian's been very forthcoming, and, uh, I appreciate his coming to, and I can't say that I stand in total opposition of it by any means, but on the same token, it does make me concerned about my property and my taxes, and what's going to happen, and what can I do, and what can I not do, moving forward, and that, you know, I live there and want to stay there is kind of my goal. I understand that progress happens, and I, I'm not opposed to that, but this is completely about industrial or manufacturing-type scenario, whereas mine is residential, and so that's my concern, is, is what does happen to my residential, they build around it, and all of a sudden, I'm that little guy in the middle with just a house, so.
Mr. Chairman, any other question? May I add something? So if we are granted time, and we choose to take time to research, what does that look like in respect to the commission in a timely manner?
The only thing I see, if we were to sign and give them the little note that I drafted, is that we have met 762204, which says that we will give them a recommendation. Our recommendation is, we need more time. The time is spelled out by law, not necessarily for the zoning, but it's spelled out by law for the TED as being 60 days from the time that we're presented with the plan. They can choose to go ahead and do it at their next meeting if they want to. We are strictly advisory, and one of, one of these in here, yeah, 204 even says in the last sentence, "But such recommendations shall be advisory only." But for us as a board to meet the law, that's the reason I think we need to, other than just verbally telling them or taking a vote and saying it, that's why, in my mind, it would be better if we handed them a piece of paper and says, "Wait a minute, let's back up here, let's lay out a game plan, an outline, and let's take one step at a time, so that we have things in order." In my mind, it means getting the zoning done first. I mean, we can compless it in terms of, does it meet the growth policy? I don't see any problem with the growth policy, but there's too many things tied together in these documents. It's not just about the boundaries.
What would you consider a reasonable time?
Well, by law, we've been at least emailed. If we get the copies that Janet said she had, that we could have, the 35 pages, in my mind, that means that we owe the commission an answer inside of 60 days from today, once we get ahold of them, either up, down, sideways, or whatever.
Is this what you're referencing, the 35 pages?
Mm-hmm. That was you, wasn't it? I was too cheap to put it down.
Do you have questions on the growth policy?
No. But those are the only timelines that I see, and it's all, as far as I'm concerned, it's all open to legal review. I just know, that's the only time that was in MCA that I found that addressed it, and it was something that they addressed as part of 7154279, which is the TED, and then you go back in the law, which is the urban renewal, I have to think that it would probably apply, but they even addressed it, I think it's in this one, page 16. Look on your colored copy there. There was a number. Just to make sure I get it right, that it was...
Which one are we looking for?
I think this was, uh... I was looking for the reference to 715 in the 4200 series. Look at, look at, maybe it was on my computer. Yes, thank you.
Seventeen, the top.
That's the one that gives, that's the reference that gives us 60 days from the receipt of That's all I have to go on, I don't, Corey might have a different opinion, but we're trying to roll too many things into one, if I may, and it's starting to say one. So we can either put it to a verbal vote, or we can decide that we want to give them a piece of paper, that's up to you, folks.
Mr. Chairman, are you open for a comment from the public? For the two members who weren't here a year ago, Herb was very right. A year ago, we were here, a little over a year ago, in this meeting, talking about what a TED is, Targeted Economic Development District, then again, looking at the next details on moving forward. As an organization, this is the third one that we've been associated with, understanding the concerns of the, of the board at that point. As an organization, we hired professionals to actually have a meeting in the district with the landowners to actually have a conversation about what a TED is, and that there is zoning attached to it. So in August, we did have a meeting down at the...
Headwaters Planning, or Headwaters something.
Kind of community room-y type thing, specifically from that, or that, recommendations from the planning board to clarify that bamboozle, we wanted to go down and have the conversations with the professionals in the room to explain what a TED is, what the impacts to you are, and that we would be potentially moving forward with a plan, which then would go through this formal steps at this point. Since that point, we have then had Janet and Lynette create a zoning document, a proposed zoning document, and a proposed redevelopment plan for this region, again, with the idea that we're going to work with the commission to have a line around the area to not exceed, and then to potentially scale back, because there are really three tracts of land which will see benefit potentially to their property, but create some restrictions, and very specifically for Mickey, it is a housing restriction that is probably the most, um, in, um, conflicting or potentially conflicting for her. The intent, though, was, is to bring the details to the members in the area that do this, that would be impacted from this. So now the steps are moving forward, we have gotten to a point where we at least have had those meetings, we need to actually have those presented documents, so that we can actually move forward. Now, again, at this point, not to go too far, but when you get into rural communities, what happens at times is, we, we can see in a development, or in potential development, that things start to drag, and time is money for businesses that are going yet. It's the one thing I do want you to know, is we're, there is a closing of a $10 million financing package with a $4 million to $6 million cash infusion from a business that wants to be in, up and running by spring, late winter-spring of next year at this point. These features that are identified in the TED need to be at least started, if not in place, at some point, so there is some relevance to time. So I do just want to make sure that you understand, we took the conversation from the planning board very seriously, and have expended our resources to make sure we had public hearings and additional meetings with individuals in the district down there that would be impacted from this.
But to build on your timeliness, Brian, you were in a hurry. Excuse, go ahead.
I'm John Clark. I own the northern portion of the boundaries, or the 300 acres on the far north, and I never heard anything about beans, none of that.
Okay.
So I kind of got left out.
We were informed from the building that they had spoken with you on that.
I haven't heard from you guys about that.
Okay.
So I guess I'd have some interest there, too.
Yes.
Okay, for the record, and particularly for our new members, because they weren't here, uh, the two meetings occurred on the 30th of May and the 27th of June last year, according to the minutes, and the notes. We had minutes for one, and just notes from another. Brian was in a hurry then. I guess my question to him and to the general public is, if he was in a hurry a year ago, and I think I just heard you say that you had the meeting at Headwaters in August last year?
Yes.
Okay. Why are we now, 10 months later, getting these documents without having something starting from that end of the county, with the consultant's help, where we already have the zoning in place? You've solved the questions at that point in time. To come in now and tell me that somebody has a problem and needs it by X, that's just adding to that hand truck that I alluded to before. It don't make any difference to me. It's unfortunate, but if we take care of business in an orderly fashion, things will fall into place. But the failure to plan on somebody else's part, or to take action on somebody else's part, does not constitute an emergency on the planning board's part.
I, I know there have been documents that have been presented through to individuals, not in this format, but have been in the months coming up to this.
Well, my whole point is that we wouldn't be having to have this kind of a conversation if, at least in my mind, and I'm not, you've got a lot more experience at it than I do, but if... but if you follow the steps coming up and the procedures, and that's all I'm proposing now. If you had walked in here with the zoning documents and approved, and so on and so forth, from the ten people that are ten landowners that are involved in it, that is probably a slam dunk. In terms of if they're being self-zoned, and it's the people in the zoning district are the property owners, and they've already bought into it, I'm certainly not going to object to anything. But if you start the top-down process and you want my blessing on it, it ain't going to happen.
Mr. Chairman, I'm curious as to know... Lynette and I have done these, and we've done about two and a half dozen of these across the state. And the... so based on that, the zoning requirements in the statute are growth policy-based, other words, type-two zoning, which is growth policy-based zoning. We have, as Brian mentioned, given opportunities for property owners to weigh in on this. And obviously, anybody, you know, when you go into an area that's never been zoned before, people are concerned. And I don't... I think it's important that we recognize those concerns. But from a legal standpoint, I'm curious as to what you are... And we have, we've been working... we went under contract late last year, and we prepared the resolution necessity. We've already gone through that process with the county commissioners. We've prepared the plan, and we prepared the zoning regulation. I can't account for how it's gotten to you. Those are all given to, you know, prepared. But I would be curious as to your legal concerns, because as I say, having done many of these before, where I'm not aware of any issues that you're concerned about the legality. So it would be helpful for me to understand what your concerns are based on your reading of this, given that, again, it's Part II zoning, which is growth policy-based, rather than Part I zoning, which is landowner-based. We certainly have given opportunities for the residents to speak up. But again, if it is the commission's intent to create this district, we do have to go through the process as set out in the statute. So I'd be... I really would like to know where... We'd be happy more to answer questions with respect to legality to try to... I know you want more time to absorb all this, but if you had any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Well, all I'm doing is... I made copies of MCA from the references that were in your documents. Could be my reading. But that's the reason we need more time, as opposed to having somebody come in and say, "This is going to be blessed just because we presented it to you." I've had comments from other citizens, "How can you be on a pass-through board?" I don't consider us a pass-through board. There are things that we are allowed to do, and there are things that we are not allowed to do. We cannot stop this because we're not allowed to. But we're not required to pass it through either. And I just don't... in my reading of everything, all of this, my reference points came from your documents, okay? And in seven fifteen forty-two seventy-nine, which is your TED, you go down under the requirements of a TED. Second item, must be zoned, okay?
In accordance with the growth policy.
It may not be illegal, but there is way too much to digest for me. And I've been on the planning board for quite some time, and it's not the first time that we've had to read MCA. I just do not feel that it is in any way, shape, or form appropriate. Maybe it's not illegal. But it's certainly not... it's the methodology. And that's what we told Brian a year ago. It wasn't... nobody in this room that was on the board then had an objection as such to a TED. We didn't know enough about them to even know what it is. We had to go read MCA and find out what a TED was. Yeah. Sounds good, but again, this is the first thing. It has to be zoned. You didn't present us with a document that asks us for a blessing on, "Does this comply with the growth policy?" You got the fancy resolution and everything else, but you made several other comments in here. And when you start referencing the TED in the zoning documents, then I see a real problem with that. Because there are a couple of items in the TED that I either have to have explained to me in much more detail to where I don't have a problem with them. And it's not the concept, don't get me wrong with that. It's literally what MCA allows. But I personally have some heartbreak. It's not about me, it's about everybody here. It's about the commission, it's about the people in the county. If we wanted to walk in and say, "We're going to put this thing up to a vote for all of the citizens in Broadwater County," I'd say, "Have at it." Just make sure you explain it thoroughly first. Because it had... it has not been thoroughly explained to us as a planning board. Most of what we have gleaned has been from our own personal research. We were given information that had MCA references. But it's too much, too fast. And if you want an answer today, this guy's answer is no. Lynette?
Yeah, I just would like to throw it out there, too. I have not read any of these documents, so I don't know. But one thing that I was thinking, if I was a property owner down there, I would want the zoning to go forward hand-in-hand with the TED. Because I would not want my property zoned, and then the TED not go through. So I mean, if the TED was going to go through, at that point in time, I would want the zoning, like, to happen right before it. I wouldn't want my property to be zoned, and then we'll wait and see if the TED happens. I mean, that just food for thought. Like I said, I haven't read any of that, but just sitting here, listening...
I don't have a problem with that, but I still have a problem with wanting an answer today. Because MCA says that we have sixty days to digest and make a recommendation on the plan. Perhaps that will happen in sixty days. I don't know which way it's going to go. But to come in and expect an answer based on these documents that we were handed today and that we were emailed two weeks ago after a canceled meeting, I think is rather presumptuous.
As a resident down there, I guess I would like to... You said that these documents have been available and short of the meeting that I went to in August. And then Brian coming to me, "Y'all are talking about something that I personally haven't seen, and I don't know that it's Brian's responsibility to bring them to me." But as one of the business owners, the meeting that was canceled a couple of weeks ago and this meeting are the only things that I've been even kind of in tune to having a voice.
Yeah, we've had several meetings. And I can't, you know, I don't know how those meetings were. And again, we are always available to answer questions. And I did... I'm sorry that, you know, that we've invited members of the planning board and the commission to all of our meetings, and I think sometimes the people just weren't able to come. But I'm a teacher, I teach at Montana Tech, and I'm always very interested in answering questions. I like to be able to, you know, I think that the democratic process, I think you're right, you can't make a decision without being informed. But we're here, and we would just really be happy to answer questions for you if you have some of these concerns. And, you know, I know that Brian has talked to many of you, too. And I understand that sometimes being presented with a lot of information all at once makes it difficult to make decisions. But I, you know, we really are happy to in answering any questions or concerns that you might have. You know, and if, you know, if today is the moment where you would... you have those questions, you know, either through Brian can always relay those questions to us. But we're happy to explain. And as I said, we've done several, and as I said, about thirty of these around the state. And they've been always involved, these, you know, some places we've had to go through the zoning process, and other places not, but we... because they're already zoned. But we're just really happy to do this. We've worked closely with the state legislature and with county attorneys across the state in addressing the concerns that you have. And so as an opportunity to, you know, you have other things on your agenda today, but I do want you to know that we are always happy to answer questions and concerns. And we're not expecting a rubber stamp. We are more concerned about you understanding what all is involved here.
Well, I've got one question for you. How many meetings have you had?
Well, let's see, three, four? Four, not counting the one with county commissioners.
Okay. Then I would take issue with one comment that you made that the planning board has been informed and been invited to us. I was aware of one meeting last summer.
Yeah, maybe that was the one that we were invited to. Maybe not to the others. The others were more, you know, working meetings about meetings with property owners.
May I make a suggestion? When we did the growth policy and regulations, or the county regulations, bring them up. We had in the paper, and we had meetings at Greek Montana, Winston Fire Hall, we had them here in town, and we had them out at the silos. And they were highly publicized. And I feel that's what we're lacking. We need to get the public involved. And you can't be involved if you don't know when it's happening. And so I would make a suggestion that maybe we have some good publicity on this instead of... Because this does affect the whole county financially. And so I feel we need to have more openness as to when the meetings are.
If there is zoning, then who enforces that?
Me, I ask...
Broadwater County.
Meaning?
Nicole. It's up to Broadwater County Commissioners as to who's enforcing it.
So how does that look, Nicole, with our lack there of zoning? Would that be permits? What does that look like, enforcement?
You know, since we don't have zoning in the county, I've never experienced this, so I really am learning this all right along with all of you.
The zoning regulation allows for permits if that's a decision. However, if you read the zoning regulations, it virtually allows all commercial industrial uses with virtually no restrictions. So therefore, there's really very little to evaluate in terms of a permit. So there may not be permits.
So I guess I... really what I'm asking is that because we currently have no zoning, there's just things that come before our county that are questionable, and we have no recourse. We can't... we have trouble with enforcement because we have to follow Montana state law. A few of the things that we have... this is a poor example, but... So now we have county commission on new subdivisions where we put in culverts. The reality is, they're put on there, but we don't have a good form of enforcement. We tried. So I'm just wondering what this looks like.
Does it have any teeth?
All I can... well, again, it's a wide-open industrial-commercial zone. There are no commercial-industrial uses that are not allowed. And specifically, I'm sorry, the only use that is not allowed are dwellings. New dwellings cannot be built there. And...
Can they be grandfathered in?
Of course. Everything's grandfathered in. Absolutely. But new ones cannot be built. There will never be any competition for your houses.
But that's not necessarily a good thing either.
Adjacent to it will be all the houses you want.
Yeah, right outside the district.
Maybe all the houses you want.
Can it be zone fifty-fifty?
No.
And there are three hundred acres that I don't need to have commercial?
Well, unfortunately, no. The reason for this is the TED, to support secondary value-adding industry. And that's the whole point of doing this. And so it's zone industrial, commercial, in accordance with your growth policy. It's not zone residential, because specifically, the growth policy doesn't talk about residential. And we're looking at infrastructure to support secondary value-adding industry. It's a catch-twenty-two, goes around and around and around in the circle. We're looking at secondary value-adding industry, infrastructure for it, therefore, it's zoned for secondary value-adding industry, not for residential.
So you don't have building permits?
No.
In Broadwater County?
No, no.
So, but essentially, what you're saying is that that if someone were to try to build a residential development in that area, they would be in violation of the zoning regulation.
But virtually, that is the only violation.
That's the only violation.
You're telling me I can't build a house out there if I want to go out there and live on my three hundred acres?
You can't build a rebel home park, you can't put a park that you can't build.
Correct, correct.
Which is why we have had this as... this is the boundary with the potential that it will shrink for that very reason.
I have all landowners...
Well, that's why there's... we're looking... There's a potential for the boundary to shrink, because some of the landowners are not sure they're that interested in it. And, you know, that may very well be what happens.
We've done this in areas in Jefferson County, in Yellowstone County, where properties owners have... and in Ravalli County, where properties owners have said, "We don't want to be in this," so we've taken them out. So what, to kind of answer your question, is that when you get it too small, it's no longer worthwhile doing. But at a certain point, we have to say, you know, that yes, if you don't really want to be part of this, then we can take you out. But again, the potential for this area to take off with the types of businesses that Brian's been working on recruiting would benefit, you know, you have to think long-term, would be of great benefit to the county. So the opportunity for the county to invest in infrastructure using the taxes that come from these secondary value-adding businesses is tremendous. And the opportunity is... you know how it is, if someone builds a house next to a factory, then pretty soon that homeowner is saying, you know, "Why are you letting that factory be there? Because it's invading on me." So you want to protect the investments of those developers. Because, you know, again, when you might have some conflict with residential. But we've allowed, you know, the boundary says what happens inside, but all the way around it could still be residential. So we're not really precluding that in that area, just in that, within the boundary.
If a landowner within this boundary's decided to not want to participate, can he still be forced to participate?
There's nothing to do to participate. You don't have to, you don't... If you don't want to do anything at all, you can stay there. The only thing you can't do is if that property owner wants to build houses.
Right, but I mean, he may want to opt out, but does he have that ability to opt out?
After it's in place, the answer is no. Before it's in place, they can ask to be removed. I don't know that there would be a big enough protest to protest it not occurring, but there's that option as well. But that's why the discussion is currently ongoing as to how, what actually will be in the final boundary.
I don't know if this would apply in reading through... I've lost track of how many pages of MCA. I do recall seeing something where there was a protest procedure for the district. Now, whether or not it was a TED, or whether or not it was just a strictly zoning district. In that one, if I remember right, it was, I think it was... Well, there were three numbers that I remember. One of them was fifteen percent. If there was an objection, then it couldn't be enacted for one year. And then if there were another percentage... I don't remember the timetable, but there were limitations. But when it got to the point, at least... And again, I'm not trying to say this is against the TED, this... But it had to do with zoning, because I just was scanning everything on zoning in MCA. What I got out of it was that after about three years, they were up the creek. If they didn't have enough people objecting, one person could in fact be forced to be part of the zoning district. And again, I'm not saying, I'm not going against what these ladies are saying, but there, there are provisions in MCA to stick it to you.
Just to answer, there's no protest period for the, you're correct. There's no protest period for a TED. You know, that's, but zoning has that, that thirty day protest period that Onette referred to. Once, once the commission passes what's called a resolution of intent to create the zoning, there's a thirty day period for protest. And in addition to, but to go back to your original question about the TED itself, is that the, um, usually when a property owner opts not wanting to be in it, which was our experience, is that it was over the zoning, not over the TED.
Right, right. That's what I was.
And so the, that's where we, we, we start with a larger boundary, knowing that there may be a couple of property owners that say, no, we can't divide parcels. We have to have whole parcels in the TED for the calculation of the tax increment because of the, you can't say, I want this half of my acre or my parcel to begin the TED and this out. It has to be whole parcels. But yes, you can absolutely, you know, we, what we want to do in these districts is to have, the people who are in the districts want to be in the districts. You know, obviously, it's a, it's a benefit to those who are because they have an opportunity to have their infrastructure, the public infrastructure paid for, particularly for businesses that are looking to expand. So it's a, it, it really is a win-win and, you know, your concerns about the zoning are well taken. But it, it is to benefit the county in the long term to have a more sustainable economic base.
Jump in there, Laura, because you keep raising your hand. You've been three times.
Well, I'd, I'd like some clarification because I think there's a lot of fear going on here, but not as many facts and not as solid as I think we all want it. First thing is Chad, Ross, welcome and thank you both very much. You two are new to this. It's only been a week for you guys. You haven't seen the growth policy yet. We will get that to you, we being Nicole. But the rest of you, it was said that you haven't got any of this information. I understand you got four pages today, but Nicole has sent you information before. And I know this started a year ago, year and a month ago. And it's kind of trickle, you know, during that time, even though there's a space of months where maybe something didn't happen. It doesn't preclude the fact that this did start a year and a month ago. So what I would like to know from Nicole is, you know, when did the paperwork go out and what has been the, the sharing of information? So that everybody is aware of what has been shared and how much you guys have. And then the other thing is, is I totally understand, you know, you have a resolution and it refers to MCA, the law. It can be scary, but it has to be there. It's not there to bamboozle anybody. It is there to illuminate that there is a legal process and we're following that. And here it is for a quick reference. And Herb, I very much appreciate that you said that it is, it does appear to be legal. The MCA allows it. And I know you have personal concerns. I totally get that. For the folks who are asking the question of, do I have to be in the TED? I would like to hear a definitive, no, you do not. If indeed, and I'd like clarification on this, if it starts at a thousand acres and the guy in the northern acres, which I understand is where you're at, says, no, I don't want to be in here, you draw the line not to include those acres. So you're not in it. You're not in the, the, you're not in the zoning. But should you decide later you want to buy into the sewer district? That's an open invitation. You can do that without the zoning. So, and then the last question I have for Janet is the sixty days. It's my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong. It's my understanding that we start the process so that we have the initial line drawn that defines what the TED and the zoning are. And during that sixty days or thirty days, that's when folks can offer public comment that they want to change the line, they aren't interested in being in it, or they are, or they have questions about how does it, how does it affect them personally. But we can't really get to that until we get at least started and are able to draw that line, which is all we're doing today is getting, does this comply with the growth policy? Yes or no? Am I wrong?
Yeah, okay. In general, no, you're not wrong. So just a few little points there. Think, okay. You have two things again. One is the zoning.
In compliance with the growth policy.
Is the zoning in compliance with the growth policy? The second is, is the TED in compliance with the growth policy? That's it, really. The, okay. The, to answer Laura's question, the planning board has sixty days to give its recommendation regarding the TED to the county commission. If there's no such similar thing for the zoning. That's all the sixty days are referred to. When the commission passes a resolution of intent to create the zoning regulation area, zoning district, then there's a thirty day period of protest.
For the people that are in it.
In the zoning district.
Whatever the line is at that point in time.
But you cannot do the TED until you have the zoning in place. And you can do it all at one meeting. You can have the zoning at your first and then, you know, create the zoning district and then adopt the TED. The TED requires two readings with a public hearing and all the property owners have to be notified by certified mail. So it's a very, you know, all that. But to go to Laura's question, at any time until the council, uh, excuse me, until the commission adopts the TED plan, we can change the boundary. And the zoning boundary could be changed until, before the resolution of intent?
Basically, the, the public hearing, the first reading of the TED and the resolution of intent on the zoning, that's, that's the end of, they can, they can have to take it back and start over.
Over again. But, but up until that point, up until the commission takes it up and starts acting on it, the boundary can be changed. But the only, there's two, there's sixty days that you have to respond to the, essentially what the commission is asking for your recommendation. The commission, as, as you pointed out, can act without your recommendation if it wants to. It has to request it, but it doesn't have to.
It doesn't have to wait.
It doesn't have to wait. And then the second, um, the zoning piece, there's a thirty day protest period once the commission adopts that resolution of intent. Those are, so if you, whatever you decide today, um, you know, will, certainly begins the sixty day period.
Well, and didn't it technically begin on May twenty-first, Nicole?
Because we, we send it to you. Yeah, okay.
Well, the date, the first meeting was supposed to occur at least.
On May twenty-first.
So the intent of zoning is not real?
Well, the question is, is it in compliance with the growth policy?
That's the.
That's what's before you.
I guess that question, is it in compliance with our growth policy?
That's, that's the question.
But I've got a question in regards to the zoning, particularly if I'm understanding it correctly, the zoning only applies to the TED.
Right now, the boundaries are the same. They don't necessarily, the zoning district could be bigger than the TED.
But the TED can't be bigger than the zoning.
Is there anything in MCA that specifically states the number of people that have to be on, I think they call it a board of adjustment or something, but in that zoning district, who's going to sit on the panel that's going to make the.
Board of adjustments, that's strictly up to an after the fact thing by the county commissioners. And it, it, they don't all have to come from that zoning district. It's there, the county commissioner's decision as to how the board of adjustment is made up. And it may be one person from that district. If they can't get anybody to sit on, there may be nobody from that district on the board of adjustments. Again, if you looked at the zoning regulations, there's nothing for the board of adjustments to rule on. So.
That's the reason for my question is because if there's only ten property owners in there and you have two of them opt out, you have a one in eight chance of having somebody from within the district on the board. I know from experience sitting right here, we have a damn difficult time just trying to get people to fill out the board to show up for a monthly meeting or a quarterly meeting, in reality, in some years. It just, there's a hole in it there is what I see.
Well, that's, that's why it's written in such a manner that the, the necessity of a board adjustment is very limited. So I would venture a guess that you'll, there will never be a request to go before the board adjustment. And, and if there is, then the county commissioners will have to scramble to appoint one. So they have to make a recommendation when it says, I want to build a building that's too tall. There's no height restriction in the zoning district. So therefore, nothing is too tall. That's what a board of adjustments would rule on.
One more, this is really a silly, far out question. We're going to get that dear lady down there.
I know from being in town, we're zoned, not zone zoned, but regulations. What kind of house you can put where, mobile home where you can put where. It just so happened, I'm in a block that I happened to find that our whole block can be both commercial and residential, each house. Is there any way she may be that way?
She could certainly be commercial.
No, but can she be both?
We continue to be the residential that she is and commercial.
Is commercial considered to be, if it was a, it's a mobile home park or a apartment building?
No, no residential.
But that would be commercial.
No, that's a residential use that you're getting commercial money on, not to say. No dwell, no additional dwellings.
I can't get residential with the bank, so, you know.
No, no additional dwellings in this.
This has been the sticky wicket in this whole process. And we have had a couple of meetings that continue to have this same type of, what can't I do in this idea? It is the residential component that is difficult.
Would, would it make sense here, I'm just, I'm pretty new here, so I'm, I'm going to object, is to go ahead and, and recommend the zoning? And then we still have the sixty days to determine if we, we're going to recommend the TED?
Sure. You can, I mean, you can do, you can do, you can recommend both, neither. You can recommend, you, you'd have to recommend, you can't just recommend the TED. You'd have to recommend the zoning.
Right.
But you could recommend the zoning, or if, when it says, all that you're doing is you're saying it's in performance with the growth policy. You're not saying that you're, you're not endorsing it.
Right.
You're just saying that it's in recommendation with the growth policy because the growth policy says this area is commercial and industrial. But yes, the answer to your question is yes.
And at that point in time, then if, if, if there was opposition to it, they would go to the commission.
Correct.
And protest or whatever at the commission side of it. And it would be up to the commission to decide whether they would go ahead with the zoning. Is that not correct?
That's correct.
So why are we worried about recommending that it be zone commercial and industrial? At this point in time, it really means nothing other than it get, it recommended to the commission that they take a look at it in that light.
Yeah, and, and you're being asked, as I said, it's a technical question as to whether this particular zoning regulation implements the intent of the growth policy.
And as I understand, it does.
Yes.
So I, I'm a little bit confused on the dates here. You said at one point in time that this, the first date, first notification was May twenty-first, today being June tenth. And if, are we in that thirty day timeframe now in which we've only got another ten days to?
Two, two different things.
Okay.
The one we.
That's what I don't understand. As a person that holds land inside of what you are talking about, I do not understand that.
Okay, so I'm, I'm going to try and let me know if I've been clear. The first is the zoning. The zoning goes, the, the county commission will pass a resolution of intent and then that's when the thirty day starts on the zoning.
Okay.
The second thing is creating this special economic development district called a TED. And that, the planning board has sixty days to respond.
Okay. So as the zoning part, I need to go to, as one of the, I think he said, ten landholders in this particular area. And I think you might be out, lucky you, but.
And you can be also, and that's what.
And that, and I just called up something here that I, was from January, that I kind of got a map of, that I asked Brian about. And again, as the landholder, I do not know what you are doing. And that's why I am here is because I do not know what you are doing. Brian has tried to start this and in all honesty, he has been to my shop, I think, twice personally to try to say, hey, would you like to chat and ask some questions? I don't know what questions to ask because I don't know what is being proposed. Does that make sense? That, that's my concern.
So I, I think that might be helpful. First of all, all we're doing is, to be very, very simple, all we're doing is enabling in the neighborhood, in this area, which includes your property, the development of manufacturing and secondary value adding businesses. We're, we're saying that in this area, Broadwater County wants to build, in this case, maybe a brewery or expand the bakery or something else, somebody's going to, this area is going to be an industrial, commercial area. The property owners in that area will continue to do what they are doing now. Nothing will change. You can, you can build new commercial developments. The only thing you cannot do under the zoning would be to build new housing, period. New residential.
So the trailer house that is across the street that is owned by Wheat Montana Farms or the motel.
Stays, they're there already. Whatever uses are currently there, stay there. You don't have to close your homes. Nothing changes. This is all looking forward. So looking forward, you would, you would be able to, if you build, let's say you decide you want to build a, a company that manufactures ski poles. The taxes that you pay on that company will come right back into that neighborhood to build the roads and the lighting that you need for your business.
And that's the caveat.
And wastewater. Okay, so.
But in addition to that, I get to pay more taxes.
But, but not, we're not loving new taxes. The only new taxes you'll pay are taxes you would pay anyway if you expanded your business. When you start a business, you always pay more taxes. If you put an addition on your home, you have to pay more taxes. All that just says is you don't pay any more taxes than you would anyway. All we're doing is saying how those taxes are used once they're collected.
The carrot and stick here is this, the growth going on just from the brewery is going to generate roughly, I mean, one point five million dollars worth of ta, brand new taxes that instead of being spread throughout the county are being spread to alleviate this deficiency of infrastructure. The intent and what usually happens is once you get the infrastructure in, more businesses come in and they also add in new property tax, which continues to pay down the debt associated with the infrastructure. From a county standpoint, is that some point anywhere from fifteen to some dates later, that TED is, is put to bed at that point. And all of those taxes go into the general or are spread out throughout the usual.
That southern Broadwater County is supporting Townsend.
Right. And this is a way to have.
But not in the early years of when, when this district is.
What are, what are the years?
Fifteen years and then if you can sell a debt, you can sell a bond. So let's say, let's say you want to have a sewer system that's going to cost five million dollars and it's going to take twenty years to pay that off. So then you extend the life of the district until that bond is paid off. But it can never be longer than a total of forty years. So fifteen plus twenty-five. But the, the point I want to make is by being in the district, unless you want to build new housing, it's a win-win.
I am a housing investor. Yes, I want to build housing. That is my business.
And we need to take you out of the district, period.
That is, I provide housing for somebody else. That is a large portion of my.
So then you, you are absolutely appro, it is absolutely appropriate for us to say to you then, you don't need to be in this district.
But I am right smack in the middle of that little red picture.
We'll take you, we'll figure, as long as the rest of the land is.
So that's, that's what I'm not understanding.
Or you sell them or somewhere else.
With more business because business workers need housing. So even though you're not hampered by the TED, you still get the benefits.
I, I personally can't see that yet. So that, that's, I'm not seeing that.
And as Laura said earlier, the TED will pay for the infrastructure, but you, if you're not in the TED, you'll have to pay for your own, your fair share. Your fair share of it.
If you want to attach to something, if you wanted public improvements, if you're in the TED, the TED can provide, I'm just looking for value to that. If you're not, then you have to do that to yourself.
So how do I get the documents that you say are available? How, where do I find them and how do I get them? As, as a landowner, I sincerely would like to look them over so I don't sit here and act like I don't know what I'm talking about because I don't.
Nicole has them.
But I, I would love to, you're talking about, again, I found something. But I, I would love to, you're talking about, again, I found something that was posted in January of 2019. And that was, it says, the infrastructure deficiencies. I don't know, I get along pretty well right where I'm at, so I didn't know there was any deficiencies. So, sorry, that's, I feel like I'm stupid.
We're holding this together. Which one, each person?
I am this one. I am 19.
Because that just leads to another question.
It doesn't change your power of attorney. Only the way you use the term.
I just like to be better informed. I'm not trying to make weight.
If you want to sell it, you can sell it to somebody who's definitely a expert. But you, as long as you continue to use it, doesn't affect your power. Again, I can't, I can't.
Because there is always somewhere, if I understood correctly, where the TED is located.
Which we haven't quite yet. The TED has to do so.
The TED has to, it can take other script agreements.
Officially where we're going.
Yeah, you can have, it could surround them, but if it happened to be something that broke up that line, then it could be a problem. That's all I was trying to find out.
So one last thing to the property owners. We, we've had cases where we're having, you know, where the county has said, "We'll take those property orders out." And that's fine, as long as the district still makes sense. But we've had, what happens is sometimes property owners say, "I don't want in it." And then a couple of years down the road, they say, "Oh, we shouldn't stay because of the economic advantages." And then what we'd have to do is go through this whole process again. So, you know, when a property owner opts out, we want to make sure that property owner is doing that with a full understanding that it's, you know, it's, it would be a burden on the county to re-include them, you know, at a later date.
Hi, my comment, this is all new to me also, is that what's being presented today is a process. And we're at the very beginning of the process. By the end of the process, everybody's question should indeed be answered. And from your initial statement, one of the concerns I feel you have is you don't want to be walking over these private owners. You want to make sure that their desires, what they want to do with their land, is all answered and is in clear form. And I think by the end of the process, those questions should be taken care of. And if they're not, then your larger council will have the ability to say, "Nope, sorry." That's beyond, you know, the scope of, of this particular committee. But there is a final group that can say, "This isn't going to work." On the other hand, they could say, "Yes, all of the questions have been answered, and it's a done." Is that clear? Did I? Am I?
No.
No, sorry.
Can I get your name?
Oh, Pat Ingles.
Thank you.
I think we need, because I'm glad to see this number of people here. This is probably the largest turnout that I can recall in 15 years for a public meeting or hearing, whatever the heck you want to call it. Most of the time, we throw a party and nobody shows up. So we, somewhere along the line, we need to pass something around so we know who was here for the record. So that there's no question about it after the fact.
Is it my, I guess, if we made the most, or recommendation that the county commission consider zoning as commercial-industrial, then county commission has to hold a hearing?
Correct, the county commission passes a resolution of intent. Go ahead.
They hold a public hearing where they pass a resolution of intent. Then the resolution, the notice of the resolution passage gets published in the newspaper, providing it gets published. And then that starts a 30-day protest period. And then after the 30-day protest period, if it's not protested out, then they pass a resolution to approve it.
So really, a resolution from us would only simply start the process.
Yours is a recommendation.
Recommendation.
And I'm sorry that.
Yeah, I mean, recommendation really is just starting the process. And it still gives the landowners the opportunity to come in and protest the zoning. Am I not correct?
You are correct.
I'm on two sides of the fence here. I, Ross hasn't even seen the growth policy, so for you to vote and hope that that's what the growth policy says, concerns me. However, Brian, you've held meetings, and people have been there. If we don't start the process, I'm concerned that we are going to continue to tread water. So there's my half of being on the fence.
And that's part of the reason why a year ago, we specifically reached out to the professionals. We got quotes from a couple of different professionals, brought somebody in just so we can review to see if the zoning does, at least ancillary from the, from the professionals, that this does meet the growth policy. And we have talked to multiple professionals on that, and just to get this started. And that's where our problem is, is there is a formal process that requires us to have everything out. And we haven't quite hit that point. And there's a few people that have fallen through the cracks that we thought had been informed and hadn't been, which we're picking ones up. But there is still the formal process, which is still, we haven't even hit that point yet.
I'd like to bring up one other point. This policy is nothing. It has no teeth. What it is, it's something we have to have to be eligible for money. We can't use this to prosecute anybody, stop them, or do anything. This is a worthless piece of paper.
The growth policies are not intended to be regulatory.
Exactly.
Growth policies are a guide for a community. And Jerry, you know, I'm taking Jerry's time here today, but I, the, the growth policy essentially states your vision for the county.
Yes, our wishes.
And it isn't meant to have teeth. It's things like subdivision regs and zoning, and neighborhood planning, and projects like urban renewal and targeted economic development that implement the growth policy.
Yes, exactly.
But it's not worthless, but it does what it is. It's a statement, it's a statement of your, of this community's desires to how it envisions itself. But it doesn't have any teeth, you're absolutely right. The only way to implement that is through regulatory and programmatic strategies.
Again, in these steps, I, we went to the consultants who actually helped the county produce that document.
Yes, we did. Expensive.
Well, and we talked to him just recently, unfortunately, he's passed away in the last few months.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Jim Richards?
Jim Richards.
He did.
Specifically, what, when he was writing, what was his thoughts about the South End of the county?
And that was where we had all the meetings, all the way through the whole county. Jim Richards did all of that, and put it together, and guided us.
Yes, and that was, I wanted, I mean, so from his intent when he wrote it, I wanted to make sure that it didn't feel like we were not following what he was seeing at that point. And his, his thought is, we always thought some, in his mind, we always thought something like this would happen in that area of the county.
Yes.
Let me offer up something, so we can hopefully move on to something else here. The real heartburn I have with it is the language. If we were to sign something, or I don't necessarily even sign it, just take a vote on something that says, "Yes, as a planning board, we feel that it meets growth policy." That solves your first problem, right?
Has to be written. We will rewrite something for you.
Well, then take all the MCA requirements out of it in regards to 715, 4277, and up. Because that's where I have the problem. Not the concept, it's what the law allows under those. And I still will not go along with the idea. If you want to start the process, I would go along with the idea of saying, "Yes, it meets the growth policy," in terms of doing it so that you can start on a zoning district. But take out the references to TED.
We can take out all MCA references, if that's what it?
That's fine.
We can certainly rewrite it. Where are you going to meet on that?
That's up to the rest of them. And if, if everybody is in agreement in general with that, then I would say we perhaps would move on to the next item and set a new meeting so that it can be rewritten. The new meeting would have to allow time for notice and so on and so forth. And Nicole, or you ladies, or somebody's going to have to work out the details on it in terms of what it takes to get that done. But I see that being the first step, which goes back to my original statement of, "Why didn't we get this happening a year ago?" Then we wouldn't be having this conversation. Any input from you?
I think that's excellent. I think if you were to put this before, perhaps you could help us out with the wording, that we just have to proceed with the zoning and leave out the TED. We could go ahead and proceed, and all of us agree on that.
Well, I think what I'm hearing, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that we, you, you need time to rewrite it so that we can have another meeting, so that we can actually vote on it and sign it and go on.
I am not an attorney, but I believe you could make a motion and vote on it today, subject to the written recommendation coming back for you to reread before it's signed. So it'll, I mean, so I can help you make a written recommendation, and then all the verbiage, we'll get it. You're just making the last sentence.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, so you could vote on it today, and we'll get the, and you can state it, and we'll send that to Nicole for you to sign.
And then you could do something like through email where you all have seen it and said, "Yes, this looks good." And it's okay for her to sign, so that this can be?
I'll defer to the other one supposedly. Nicole says we can't do things via email, either notion, send them.
I don't ask for your vote.
Huh?
I don't ask for your vote via email.
Well, I would presume that we need a motion from someone to follow along with what we're talking about. At least it's a step forward that, once we have something to look at, that we can pass it on to the commissioners to proceed with. And I think what I'm hearing is you don't think we have to have another meeting, sir.
No, in, in other words, incorporate what you said, stated in a motion. And then we'll, we'll make sure that it writes, we'll, we'll send you something that's written that reflects how you wrote it, the motion. Or I'll word your motion. Want to go, right, do you want to?
You want me to do that?
Yes, ma'am.
Subject to?
Yeah, to, yes, okay. So I move to make an advisory recommendation to the board of the Broadwater County Commissioners that the boundary of the Wheatland zoning district is in accordance with state statute and the Broadwater County growth policy. And that the Wheatland zoning regulation is appropriate and in accordance with state statute and the Broadwater County growth policy.
How's that sound, Mark?
I think that sounds good. Question, without the TED, can we reference the map? So we're voting on a specific?
There is a map on the last page of the zoning regulation. Yes, sir.
There's a legal description.
There's a map on the last page of the zoning regulation.
Because I've seen two maps for them, thank you. If that's legal, then?
Yeah, they basically looked exactly the same. That's the one out of the TED. It should have been on page 17, the last page of the zoning regulation. So it's basically the same.
We never got anything that went to sign 17.
Of the zoning regulation? I think that's better out. No, 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 that's, you're looking at something totally, that's the TED plan. The zoning regulation is 17 pages long.
Personally speaking, all I have ever received via email are these four documents.
It should have been?
That document and one map. It's not been anything in regards to zoning regulation.
Six documents. Two memos, two recommendations, zoning regulation, and a blank.
And those four documents came this morning, and I crunched those up for them. I forwarded everything else that we were to receive.
And you want what, written legal?
There was a?
No, we've got the written legals in there. What I'm talking about is a 17-page document that she's talking about.
Should have looked like this.
I have never received one. Be curious to see if anybody else has.
No, I didn't get that.
Six documents, and say all on six documents. But it is the same map. It's the same exact map.
I don't, I don't. Said they were the same, but I don't see what?
Yeah, they're the same.
Six times.
Yeah, all, yeah, I mean, all.
Well, I think the motion would, as you stated, that in my mind, we would be more appropriate to have an amendment to that, that, or a condition such that upon receipt of the document that we just now found out that none of us received, after review of that, that we would be amenable to a recommendation.
And we did send those out to everyone in February.
That's what happens with the cloud. Yeah, all my phone numbers are out there too.
So May, in May.
So we still need?
And that would have come from where?
I think we can use her motion, but I need, if everybody's in agreement, I think we need a amendment. Physically talks about the fact that we have, we need the opportunity to put conditions upon, upon receipt of the document that we have not yet seen. Otherwise, we're voting in blind. You know, and if we don't put any conditions on it, in my mind, it carries on through the same as if we had had them right here and just did. I still need a motion from Lady State, as she read, plus a, the possibility of conditions since we have not seen the document.
So don't you think it might be more appropriate to schedule another meeting, a week or so out?
Well, to me, it would, but that, however, do the, the group wants to handle it. You know, the idea is, we need to move forward, we've got another agenda item. And I promised you that this wasn't going to be a long meeting, and we're already longer than what we've been. Plus, I'm going to leave at 5 o'clock, come hell or high waters, so, because I have a doctor's appointment. I would entertain the thought of having another meeting, as long, that's what I was talking about to begin with. If we have, you tell me how much time you need to legally notice an additional meeting so that we can sign the document, and it's a done deal.
So first of all, I guess I need to know, because I'm not sure, does it need to be a public hearing? Or is it, would it be a special meeting?
You can close the public hearing at this time and continue the decision to a stated meeting date.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then, all you would have to do is your standard notice, not your notice of these things.
Correct, and then it would be listed as all business on your agenda.
Yeah.
Amen. So with that being said, it seems like we have the ability to schedule no sooner than 48 hours to be in compliance with MCA. But anything beyond 48 hours, you can close this public hearing, and I can post in three public places. So if you all have your calendars?
It won't work for me, because I've got something tomorrow and Wednesday.
That's too close to 48 hours anyway, so tomorrow, Wednesday won't work. The soonest you could meet would be Thursday, Thursday. The soonest you could meet would be Thursday, Thursday night.
If you're talking about Thursday, then...
What about the next week? What does everyone's schedule look like?
I will leave it a common date. Just give me a date.
Okay, so we have Monday, the seventeenth.
Yep.
Tuesday, the eighteenth. Do we have a preference for date and/or time? Seventeenth?
Yeah, it's fine, it's up to me.
Seventeenth for everyone?
Okay.
Do you prefer morning or afternoon?
I prefer afternoon.
Same time? June seventeenth, two thirty.
Okay.
And if it's appropriate, I would encourage any of you, if you have questions through the process, I can email your questions on to Janet and Lynette, and they can be prepared to answer those in a public meeting. But at least they would have an opportunity to, to prepare answers to your questions.
Now, how was the public hearing advertised? Was it only for the TED, or was it for zoning, or maybe it was the growth policy? Can we close the public hearing, is my real question, so that we can go on to attendance with the growth policy?
It was one agenda, as a special meeting, so I don't see why you cannot just move on to the next agenda item.
Okay, then let's move on to the next one, we're not gonna close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, Jerry Gerbence with Great Western Engineering.
Yes, sir.
The county is in the process of updating three documents: floodplain regulations, the county growth policy, and the capital improvements plan. And for the new board members who haven't had the pleasure of reading through this beautiful book that you can see I have tabbed up, because it's part of my job, I've got examples that I want to share with regards to growth policies. But a couple of things. One, there are three projects going on at this time. The budget is really limited, and to the point that, you know, maybe the previous growth policy was expensive, but we've got to be really efficient. We're updating the floodplain regulations, the capital improvements plan, and the growth policy. The planning board, under state statute, is required at a minimum to hold a hearing and provide a recommendation to the county commissioners on the growth policy. So the planning board is pretty integral to updating the growth policy. Some boards like to be involved from square one to the end, some like to see a draft, give input, hold a hearing, and make a recommendation. What we built into the scope of work for the update of the growth policy was two work sessions with the planning board that work out for your schedule. And then, obviously, one of those, or in addition, there'd be a public hearing to make a recommendation on the growth policy. I have to admit, my philosophy is, is to really create an efficient document. There was a conversation that growth policies are useless. My opinion is, is they're useless if you want them to be. Ultimately, I think a growth policy is most effective when you have a list of projects that you want to achieve, and they're realistic. It's great to have, you know, high goals, lofty goals to do X, Y, and Z, but people in the public want to see, get, they want to see things get done. So from my perspective, I want to help the, the planning board, and ultimately the commissioners create a document that gets things done, whether it's grants to build an event center, it's to update the subdivision regulations, because I can guarantee you that over the years, you run into issues with your subregs that you want to fix. And to do that, you have to make sure that your growth policy talks about those things. So I'm gonna hand out some examples, especially for the new board members, and really what it is, one is, it's a flyer on the top about what is a growth policy, just from my perspective. We've moved from the days when growth policies, which used to be comprehensive plans, master plans, whatever you wanted to call them, to growth policies, really focused on land use. And frankly, anymore, my advice is, is land use is just one piece of the puzzle. You've got economic development, you've got local services, you've got infrastructure, whether that's, you know, the senior center, roads, bridges, funding recreation facilities, the list goes on and on. Most of my clients anymore are really focused on economic development, infrastructure, and local services, because in many places in Montana, land use, other than the periodic subdivision, isn't necessarily the biggest issue. This document can be what you want it to be. And what I did is I handed out two examples. One is the most recent Mar County growth policy, and the other one is from the City Roundup. All I wanted to do was provide you with a glimpse of what yours might look like. The statute outlines what the content has to be. You, as the planning board and the county commissioners, have the flexibility to decide what level of detail that goes into. There are things that were required to make sure in there. Discussion about the wildland-urban interface, sand and gravel, I won't even get it, we can talk about it in a work session. Why we have to talk about sand and gravel is one of those political issues. But there are certain things that the growth policy has to contain, but you have the flexibility to add other stuff. And as I work with you through this process and work with Nicole, my advice is, is, you know, make it lean and mean, I wouldn't go, it doesn't need to be an encyclopedia. Make it a snapshot picture of what the county looks like, and then really focus on those issues and the opportunities that you want to see addressed. And they, again, they can range from economic development, getting grants to, to fund projects, land use, subdivision regulations, you could talk about Teds if you want to. It's kind of nice not to be the most controversial guy in the room for once. I've been in lots of public meetings where that hasn't been the case. So I just wanted to give you kind of examples of, of how I would approach this, and actually, in the next couple of weeks, I'll have what I think is probably a really, really good example. Powder River, I'm working, Powder River County, we're working on finishing their growth policy soon, and I want to get that to you, because I really think that's gonna be a really good example. But knowing that, one, the meeting is already gonna run over time, I'm gonna be here to help you work through this process. I've already started updating facts and figures, and you'll be able to see all of this, you're gonna get plenty of kicks at the can on the draft document, but because of, one, the budget and timing, I've started updating all of the stuff that you don't want to spend time on, census data and, and other stuff. And I will bring that all together in a draft, really, really rough draft document for you to start tearing apart. To me, what the board should really focus on, and you can tell me to jump off a cliff, but it's the most, it's the hardest thing, is, is really identifying concrete goals and then projects to achieve those. Again, it could be, we need to fix this part of the subdivision regulations, because we always fight about that. Well, your subdivision regulations have to be in conformance, just like you heard in this discussion about TED and zoning, your subdivision regulations, just like any zoning, have to be in conformance with the growth policy. So there's all those little things that we want to make sure we touch on. Again, there are two other projects going on. One is the update of the floodplain regulations. I have to admit, that's a pretty straightforward project, because FEMA, the Federal Emergency Management Agency, and the Montana statutes say you have to do this in your floodplain regulations. There isn't a lot of wiggle room, so that's pretty straightforward. The county's updating its capital improvements plan, that's kind of the counterpart to the growth policy, but it folks, focuses on roads, bridges, buildings, equipment, and how the county is gonna prioritize what they want to fund. So, you know, road patrols, what bridges, what roads. And if the planning board wants to see that document when we have a draft, you're more than welcome to, it'll be available. I suspect, I suspect this might be the one you, you want to spend most of your time on. So with that, I don't know when we're gonna do our next work session. I would hope in the next month, month and a half, that I can sit down with you. I want to be able to give you kind of a rough draft, sections for you to start getting an idea of where there are holes, that you can help me fill in the blanks, and start working through things like goals and real projects. And it's never too early to start thinking about real projects. With that, I will, I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Well, I got a, got a couple, three. First of all, have you got any information from Nicole on what planning board has done previously in regards to the growth policy? Because a year ago, we were very, very close. And we were down to essentially everything other than this compilation of data that you're talking about. That could help your end of it. I like what I see here already, just because they're thinner than the one that we have. You're not being paid by the page.
No.
It's the economy to meet the law, is what my personal interest is. We gotta do it legally, but there's no reason, the first one, well, the one that got revised before was, definitely was paid by the page, in my personal estimation. The other question is, I have one quick one on the floodplain. What are you allowed to address, not on the, the plan, but can you address the fact that their maps are wrong?
That is one of those, so if there is something in the air on a floodplain map, that is an extremely expensive and involved process. My advice would be is, if that is indeed the case, we need to get that language in the growth policy and say, at some point in time, X issue needs to be addressed. Amending floodplain maps is not a simple process. I'm not gonna stand here and kid anybody. You're hiring engineers and surveyors to go and do cross-sections of base elevations, and I don't do that stuff, so it's...
Well, the last time they did it, the pile of documents was about that high.
And...
But it wasn't right. They started at a random point and proceeded with extreme accuracy. That's all I'm trying to do, is to get it to the point where it somewhat reflects, the flood pool should reflect on both sides of the river at the same elevation. Is that a true statement? Our floodplain maps do not.
So that, to me, is one of those things that should be stated clearly in the growth policy, that if you do feel like the floodplain maps are in error, that you need, we need to have DNRC at some point soon come in and sit down and explain why they think they aren't, or FEMA needs to explain why they're not. Because again, amending a flood insurance rate map is an arduous process.
I'm not looking to spend money, I just want to get it right. And that's the reason for the question, is it possible? And if it needs to be in the growth policy, then I'll make a note of that.
Yeah.
Even if it's a paragraph, whatever you say it's gotta be, then it ought to be in there so that we have that option.
Yeah. To me, that is, it needs to be a goal, it needs to be a project, and it needs to be stated in narrative, but it won't happen through the update of the floodplain regulations, because the floodplain regulations are simply a mechanism to enforce those maps, even if they're wrong. Amending the maps is a completely separate process, which is way, it's way easier to adopt regulations, those regulations than to even think about amending floodplain rings.
Good. Anybody else have any questions?
And I, I will be happy to provide you with any other examples, answer any questions, but I, you know, I would hope we can shoot for a work session in the next month. I know, you know, just listening to this conversation on the TED, you've got other priorities on the table. I'm still gonna continue to work to kind of give you a really rough draft for you to tear apart and add to and whatnot, because I firmly believe it's a whole lot easier to react to something than start a square run and rebuild it. It's just so hard to do that anymore. And to be honest, so the total, but, just, so you're in the loop, the total budget to do floodplain, CIP, and the growth policy is forty-two thousand dollars, so we need to be, and I tend to be really efficient anyway, but we really have to be efficient, so...
Well, that's the reason I ask if you already have copies of what we have done in the past in terms of the guidelines that was there, because that should help you cut down your time. That already expresses what we saw in the existing one, and we used the City of Townsend's as a guideline, and we went through and started X and O on that. We added very little, we took a lot of stuff out, because we were following the outline per MCA, and we were trying to get it pretty much bare bones, but we didn't have the data, and that's where we're at now. So I would urge you to get that from Nicole in terms of what's there. I'm a terrible note keeper, but you're welcome to mine if you'd speed up the process.
No, I'm happy to work with Nicole.
I can just get the revisions that we made. We crossed out a paragraph, we write two sentences in the margin, that type of thing. That should help you get to that baseline that you need to be before you come back to us.
That'd be great. And I have to admit, my approach on like demographic census data, economic data, I provide you with a snapshot. I don't believe in voluminous amounts of data. One, IMBA does comprehensive economic development strategy, they put all that really good data, that document's there. There's a brand-new housing assessment. I don't need to reinvent the wheel, you don't want to reinvent the wheel. There's a community wildfire protection plan for the tri-county area. We don't need to redo a lot of people's work. A little snapshot about what they said, maybe, and then we move on, so...
Well, reference to us when it goes on. That's why I like what I see, because they're thin.
But it can't emphasize enough, you want to have that real-world list of things you want to get done, and who's gonna do it, when they're gonna do it, and if possible, what it'll cost. Because it's easy to come up with a list of projects. If you don't put somebody in charge and say one is gonna get done, it'll definitely never get done, so... I, I'm happy to answer any other questions, and if not, I will see you at the work sessions soon.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions for...
Thank you.
Are there any other items for discussion? Any comments from the floor?
Thank you all very much. And I'd like to thank the two ladies who left, Janet and Lynette, for explaining it to us. I know that was hard, but they made it sound simpler than it was reading all of this.
Okay, we've already set a date for the next meeting, being, if I understood correctly, two-thirty next Monday.
That's correct.
Okay. So in that case, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion, but we adjourn.
I will second it.
Motion and seconded, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Mr. Carries, we'll see you next week.